So I just wanna, I'm not amazing it sometimes. So question is, Sue, is it the place where it says locus here?
Yes.
And it's, is it, is the, is it just splitting this locus into two?
Yes.
Or is it separating the locus out of this larger?
Splitting the locus into two.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions for Mr. Ballard?
No.
Cut and dry. Matthew, you're good?
Yeah, that looks good.
Dave in here? Okay, perfect. Nathan?
I'm good too, thank you.
Okay, now, the question on this, there's a couple things. We would give the feedback and sign this on the next meeting, which would be December 22nd. And I had asked the zoning director if we had a busy agenda for the 22nd because I was looking at where that is the week of Christmas. I would like to not have that meeting if possible. And right now, we don't have anything on the agenda except for this. So I was thinking maybe we could make a motion to approve as long as the feedback from the other boards come back with no problems found. And then we could just stop in the office the week of the 22nd and sign it.
It's an A and R, it doesn't even need a vote.
Oh, okay. We always...
It's an administrative signature of land division.
Okay.
As long as it meets the requirements under the zoning, you can sign it and send it on its way. If you'd like to wait for comments from the Board of Health and whatnot, I can collect those and I can send an email out and say they have no comment and you guys can just come in and sign it.
That's what I figured, the week of the 22nd, I'm sure we'd all be passing the Ritter one day during our Christmas shopping. So if that would work for everybody.
What's for me, sorry?
Matt, you okay?
Yep.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. As long as it comes back with no administrative questions from the other boards, we'll sign it for the 22nd.
Okay.
You can go to call.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, nice seeing you. Have great holidays, Stephen. Tell everyone I said hi. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, Matthew? Oh. That's what we taught, that's what we teach us. Teach us a new way. Okay, so that one's done. Number four, minutes of the board, we're looking for approval of the minutes from November 24th, 14, 2014, that was scanned to the board. Do I have a motion for the minutes that were scanned on for the November 24th, 14 meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes of November 24th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion regarding the minutes of November 24th?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm the only one that needs to sign?
That's correct.
Committee reports. I had the MRPC, Monmouth Regional Planning Commission, we had an executive session and then our scheduled meeting. The Monmouth Regional, they were thinking of moving across to where the old Ford building is, right in front of the Mark Building. And we had voted the meeting before to allot the money to do that. And now they're having some financial difficulties with some state cuts for the 9C. So they no longer are moving and they're actually having to lay off a couple of people. So that was kind of what we talked about in the meeting is the people that were going to get laid off, what our plans were to try to get some money back in through grants and communities, what they could do to service out some work in the communities to try to get some revenue in because they're still looking at, I believe it was a 70,000 budget deficit that they have to make up by June 30th. So that's kind of what they're strategizing in the meetings now. That was the main topic. And I do bring all the paperwork for you. I don't know if, I know Stephanie, who got laid off, sends them out, but I bring them anyway.
All the financials?
Yeah, just so you guys have them. I don't know if you want them or not, but I bring them so they're recorded. That was it for me at MRPC. Do we have, next is capital plan. I was unable to attend that meeting because I had to go to the MRPC meeting, but the highway superintendent gave his presentation of the funding he would need. So that was the last presentation of department heads and now we'll start to strategize and prioritize where the funding's going to go. So that's capital planning. Then we had school committee, Nathan?
School building committee is meeting on this Wednesday. They haven't met since we last met.
Okay, thank you. Open space, Nathan?
I haven't heard anything lately.
Okay, now, I do believe at the selectmen's meeting, I did not, I wasn't able to watch it, but they voted on the Pellrin, is it Pellrin? P E L L? They're not, they recommended not...
Yes, they recommended, or they voted not to purchase.
Not to purchase. And I know that had come in front of us, so I just wanted to let you know that that did go in front of the board and they voted not to purchase that property. Okay, building reuse, Damon?
Okay, so building reuse, we are kind of focusing on, well, right now, we made a recommendation to the selectmen that they put 20, or probably a recommendation to the capital plan committee that we put money to the tune of $28,000 away to hire a consultant, pretty much an architect, to look at all these town buildings and verify the best uses for each of them. I think that'd be a good use of town money, just to make sure we're maximizing our potential for those buildings. Myself and Ron Albert are architects on the committee, but be good to hire a consultant who can put the hours in to do an unbiased presentation on it. So there's that, and we talked a little bit about the school property line. Adam, I know you had a, or were supposed to have a meeting with them, I don't know if you could clear that up?
Well, I had a meeting with the superintendent and Mike Mackin about the school property line, less about where they were going to put it and more about what the setbacks in general were for that district and the proposed setbacks for the village district, mostly because they want to be sure that upon creating that line, they're not going to create a situation where someone finds that portion of the lot unusable. So they wanted to be sure that if they were to sell the lot without the parking, that somebody could install a parking lot or additional buildings or something like that, that wouldn't encroach on or limit the possibility of reuse of that parcel. So I gave them the information, and essentially what I told them is the setbacks are what they are in the book currently, and the village district is probably looking to reduce those. So if they stick with the setbacks that are in the book, they should be fine. If they use those as a guide, that should help them create. And I kind of showed them what the district map looked like, and whether or not that helps them create a parcel line or not, I don't know. I believe that until they're handed the keys to the new building, they won't be creating a new lot. It doesn't make sense to, because that property's still being used. So there's the potential of what happens, you know, in the process of constructing the new school and why create the property line until they're able to abandon the use of that property. Now, that's my feeling from the meeting. I don't know if that's verbatim what's going to happen or what they went back and discussed, but I think that it's reasonable to assume that passios isn't going to come into play until there's students in the new high school, middle school.
All right.
Well, because and you saw that the library has now asked that the chair of the reuse and myself go to their meeting on the 15th to talk about setbacks in Memorial Drive and what we're going to do with the road there. So they've asked that we come to that meeting as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, just one comment on that. So, yeah, the only, what you're saying all makes sense and thanks for the update and for meeting with them. Yeah, I just wonder if, you know, from like this school reuse committee, the building reuse committee wants to kind of, if we'd help them plan out in front to have something defined for that, if they can start, can they start issuing RF, you know, contingent RFPs or something, you know?
Without knowing where the property line is, no, can't even begin to start.
You can't, because the property hasn't been declared surplus.
I see.
So until it's declared surplus, it's an active piece of town property.
Gotcha.
And you can't reuse something that's already being used.
Already being used, okay.
You can't even speculate on what the uses could be without having a real property line and what kind of spaces associated with it, so.
Right, yeah.
It does hold up the process waiting till then.
I'd like to be clear, we're not holding up the process.
So in theory, they could, you know, if, if they knew the, when they know the offset, they'll be able to not make official property division, but at least...
Yeah, I mean, they could, they could sketch out, this is conceptually what the property line will be. I know that there's the question about the parking lot and which side of the property line it will be on, or whether the property line will bifurcate it or not, but they could make, in theory, they could make that decision and say, here's about what we're going to do, you're going to get, you know, between X number and X plus Y number of acres, and then the building reuse could kind of start rolling around a more guesstimate than sort of just throwing everything at the wall and saying, we don't know what exists or what's going to exist.
Right. Yeah, I see what you're saying, they could almost put a line there and say it's going to be this, plus or minus.
Yeah, eight feet or 12 feet, 20 feet, whatever.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, yeah, and that's, if they can do that, I mean, I don't, we're probably not that much of our roadblock and we'll have, hopefully we'll have the village district bylaw in the town meeting for May or whatever.
Yeah, and I would say that the village district shouldn't, other than the setback issue, shouldn't dictate where the, where or how the property line gets drawn.
There's nothing to do with it.
Gotcha.
But, I mean, you know, everybody has a different perspective on it, so there may be things going on that I don't have full knowledge of in the creation of that property line that somebody feels the village district plays a bigger part in.
Well, of course, yeah, apart from the property line, there's the uses and whatnot, but that's, okay, thanks.
Anything else on that?
No, there was a tie points to the meeting.
Okay. MJTC, Ken?
Next meeting is 1/21.
1/21, there we go. Okay, agricultural commission, Matthew?
Yes, the next meeting is Thursday, upcoming next week, Thursday, the 18th, and we have not met since the last, well, they have not met since the last time we met, but I just wanted to comment that they're hosting a discussion on the public market, and it would be great to have everybody show up.
And where is that?
They're going to be at the Ritter.
At the Ritter?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, Matt, what was the date of that?
At 7:00 PM, Thursday, the 18th.
Great, thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
All right, new business development status reports, White Woods, Mass Ave.
All right. So I went out with Fred Hamway and Jack White and did a final walkthrough of White Woods. There was a letter issued. It's complete with the exception of the as-built being turned in. My understanding is that Bill Hannigan is in the process of finalizing those. So once those are in, I think that we'll put on the agenda the release of those funds and it'll be a matter of voting on them. It looks good up there. My understanding is there's only one unit left. There was a couple of minor things that he needed to fix, but they weren't covered by the bond, so he's going to work on fixing those up because it's his road. The town's not going to accept it and it's just going to be to his benefit.
Okay, perfect. Any questions? All right. Next we have Highfield Village, Noble Court.
Correct.
Elmwood?
Elmwood, there is, or there was, a conservation hearing for three of the lots for individual notices of intent for construction of homes. My guess is they're planning for construction in the spring. As you, I believe, recall, the water line was installed off the street. I did bring the trench to the attention of the DPW director. He was going to have his guys go out there, talk to them about it. There's nothing in their current approval that requires daily sweeping, but they do get inspected regularly by conservation. So I believe if there's a continual issue, Matt will start to look at their ENS, Erosion and Sentimentation Control. If not, if it continues, give me a call at the office and I'll have him go out and take a look at it. Yeah. As part of what he's doing.
It looks great. They paved it over and they've kept it very clean.
Good.
All right, next we have Whitetail Crossing?
Whitetail Crossing has received its final inspection. I believe you guys got a copy of two letters, one from Jesse Johnson and one from me. The one from Jesse Johnson, oh, maybe you don't have that one. It may have gotten scanned out before the last meeting. There were a couple of minor issues, sorry, because we talked about this. I did speak to Dan Proctor. The driveway may even be paved in the next week. The planting will happen in the spring, just because that's, you can't plant now. I did issue a letter to the building inspector outlining that he can issue occupancy permits based on the substantial completeness of the road. All of the minor, all the major issues were wrapped up. I think the planting is a minor issue, and I know that the gentleman who has the house lots is outside of the original owners, and the burden of sitting through the winter for the planting would have been, in my opinion, unfair and outside of the intent of what the prohibition was.
Okay, perfect. Any questions? 909 Mass Ave?
Their appeal period has passed. We are waiting for the property owner to pick up the decision for recording at the registry of deeds, but if I'm not mistaken, they are open operating and according to the paper, doing pretty well.
Trittown Landing?
They have been building permits issued for the fourth building at Trittown. I don't know if they've broken ground on it, but I know that the building inspectors indicated that they will most likely work through the winter. They have the equipment to do the ground heating and the pouring and curing at temperature.
Okay, and we'll get the 3,000, once they get occupancy permits, right, is when?
Yes.
Then we do the 3,000 per unit? How many units is that? The new one, 50?
Yeah.
32?
32.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions? All right.
Yeah, just a comment, I don't think we talked about this last time, it was in the papers, happy to see the 40S funding.
Yes.
Thanks for the, actually, you sent the note, thanks for sending that, that's a big deal.
That is a big deal. And it's, you, I believe I was Carrie's note and calculations that I forwarded around?
Yes.
They, whether we get it again is a, is a question mark every year.
Every year.
So it's, you know, it's nice to get it, it's something we should be cautious about counting on.
Yep.
Does everybody understand, no, the 40, okay.
Yeah, Carrie did a pretty good job about lining it.
Middle School, High School project?
No report.
Emerald Place?
No report.
Forest Corp?
Forest Corp, there were some questions brought up at the last meeting about this.
The Wood?
Yes. I haven't had a chance to nail down the building inspector to speak to him about that. I did pull out their approval. It was done this year, so it's less than 12 months old. Generally, when you issue something like that, at the minimum, there's a two-year period to act on the approval. There is nothing in the conditions that says they have to do it within a specified period of time, nor is there anything that says that they can't store more than a certain amount or more than a certain area. And I received an inquiry from a resident, I believe a resident or a citizen, about some tree clearing that was done in the area and some concern about some waterways down there. I did speak with Matt Morrow. He said he and Jesse Johnson both witnessed the clearing, pre and post, and that he's over there probably at least once a week, if not every other week, doing site inspections to make sure everything's on track and in order. And he said he hasn't had any issues over there, but if you see something that's concerning, you know, again, give me a call and I'll, you know, roll it up the flagpole and see what, what's up. But as of now, they seem to be in compliance with what was issued and what they're expected to do.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, 651 Chase Road?
They have received their certificate of compliance as of last week from the Conservation Commission, so they are moving forward with closing out Chase Road. They will be replacing the trees in the spring.
For that?
Yeah.
Okay, because I was going to see if they had a resident.
They have, they have the warranty. The trees are warranted as of the completion of the project, so they can't, again, the ground's frozen, they can't plant trees now. You know, March, April, when everything starts to thaw, they'll be out there to replace those trees.
Okay, can we respond to that resident? I forwarded that email with the pictures and let them know that they said, just so they know that we got their email.
And if I'm not mistaken, Eric Aubrey, who was here at the last meeting, has been out to speak to that resident and let them know that they do have the warranty and that they will be replacing them.
Perfect, I just don't want them to think we didn't acknowledge their. Okay, and then, so 265 Pleasant Street?
Thank you.
Do you all have the copy that was sent?
Yes. Utility poll approval?
Yes. Does someone need copies?
Does anybody need a copy?
No. Do you want us to sign this now?
Well, you want to sign the original.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, do we need to vote on it? Did we vote on it?
Um, we might, did we vote on it last time?
I can't recall.
You didn't vote on it? I believe you had the discussion and didn't vote, waiting for the official request. So I would, I would vote to make the administrative change.
So what they're doing, they're asking, based on the findings and working with the abutters, to find an acceptable solution for the four poles. The project requests that the modifications to allow the four utility-owned poles to remain as they exist today be formally accepted by the town.
Correct.
That's the motion that they're looking for. So can someone make that motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
So this is basically, we had this discussion at the last meeting and we agreed to this.
Correct.
And we asked them to just write it up.
Yep, we asked for a formal request.
And it would be a full part of the record.
Correct.
Based on my memory and reading this, it looks to be consistent with what we had previously discussed, so that's me, I apologize.
I don't even know where my phone is.
That's a first.
So didn't we have any issues with this, or?
I see, no, my friends, so I didn't know if you're here for this. I want to give you the mic if you are. Okay, thank you. All right, so then, no comment here, no public comment, I would accept.
So there's a motion on the floor, so?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And I have to come back. Okay, do you mind if I move on while that's being signed?
No.
Okay, action files, 322 Flat Hill Community Solar, solar, verbal update.
The decision was signed, as you all remember.
Yes.
And filed with the town clerk. It is in the appeal period, which will end one week from today.
Okay, village district bylaw?
I have a, an updated draft for you, hot off the presses.
Excellent. Look at all the red.
That is the preamble, which we spoke about the last time, but there is more. Upon looking at it, I removed the special permit portion because at this point, it was just about building height, and I'm not sure that that's going to be a, an exciting or enticing option for people within this area. I think that contrasting to the other buildings in the area, Town Hall's clearly the tallest, and looking at the historic homes and the other buildings in the area, I think keeping with the standard 38 feet is probably most appropriate. I did add some parking and dimensional charts, added a couple of definitions. I reworked the campus portion, so have a look at it, read through it, and when we meet next week and sort of drum through it. If you want to push the 22nd back to the 29th and meet the week of New Year and run through this, that might be a good way to do it, just to move it into January so we can get a complete draft, but that's, that's up to the board.
Let's, I propose we review the schedule at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
But thanks, so first of all, thanks a lot for getting this together and getting this out to us. Would it be possible to get this electronic?
Yeah, I'm going to send it out tomorrow. I knew I was coming over here, so I figured I can hand it to you now and I can send it first thing in the morning when I get in.
That's fantastic, thanks.
Thanks. Scenic Road?
No report.
No report. By Willem Road, luxury apartments?
No report.
Master plan, we don't have a new date yet.
No.
And Leominster Shirley Road, that's the cell tower, correct? Is that the?
That's correct.
A no report. Notices and communications were scanned to the board, I don't think there were any. These go with the Monmouth, I'm sorry. That was the layoff letter. All right, meeting scheduled. Wow. All right, so my recommendation was December 22nd, where it's the week of Christmas, to not have a planning board meeting.
I'm in favor of that.
Does the board all agree to that?
Sure, potentially. I got a question. Uh, hang on a second. So, maybe it's, I don't know, this is kind of like a members' issue kind of thing, it's not a big thing. Well, it's just, it's really about the action file, which is looking good overall, just a couple of things I just wanted to touch base on.
Okay.
Hang on one second. Got to get my notes.
I'm going to raise a concern while Nathan does that.
Sure.
I'm all for not meeting the week of Christmas. My concern is that January 12th would be the next meeting. And if we're looking to move the village bylaw along and to have as much time to have public listening and discussion with people who are, who have not been involved at this, to this point, we may want to try and meet sometime between now and the 12th, just to tighten up on the language that I just submitted. So I'll put that out for the board to sort of mull over and discuss whether it's, I don't want to meet next week, but if, whether it's next week or whether it's, you know, the week of New Year or the week directly following that, just so there's a, some sort of buffer in there to kind of drill into the village bylaw and not drag it out further.
Sure.
Is there any reason why we avoided the 29th or the 5th?
No, and those are the two dates that I'm sort of suggesting alternatively than the 22nd.
And mine would be the 5th versus the 29th?
The 5th would be better for me.
That's my, I would, I would want to do January 5th, just people with kids and school vacation.
Yeah, oh, and again, I'm just...
So I would, my recommendation would be January 5th.
Yeah.
That we could do a village workshop, do a two-hour village workshop on January 25th, 6:30.
That would work for me.
And we want to do that here or at the Ritter?
I think here, because I think there was...
All here meetings, yep.
Oh, is that a building reuse?
That is a reuse night.
That's a reuse night.
Oh, the 5th is?
Oh, is that one?
Yeah.
January 5th is, okay.
And I guess we don't need to be married to a Monday either.
Right, where it's a workshop.
Unless...
I would just, I don't know.
That doesn't work for the board members.
I think it might be valuable, no matter what we do, we can try to be on TV for that.
That was gonna be my suggestion, is that we should meet here to be televised if possible.
Yep.
Okay, then we're back to the 29th.
Yeah.
Because Tuesday, the selectman meet and the sewer meets on the last Tuesday.
I'd rather do the 22nd than the 29th. I don't want to, because, you know, I think my kids are off during, you know, that kind of stuff.
The 22nd would be a planning board meeting.
Right, which we were gonna cancel, so we could put this in its place probably, right?
Well, I mean, if you're gonna meet, you may as well just have a normal...
No planning board meeting.
Yeah, if there's not, if there is not a heavy agenda, there's no, there shouldn't be an issue with running through the village district.
Yep.
I'm gonna knock wood and say you guys have done a lot of heavy rock crushing on it. It should now be just sort of sorting the big stones from the small stones.
That someone's optimistic.
Okay, so we're back to the 22nd?
Yep.
Yeah, not to be, I mean, unless, if you were traveling or something, I'd totally, you know...
Okay, and then we have January 12th and January 26th.
Yep.
Okay, do we have any public comment? We're meeting the regular schedule, which would be December 22nd and then January 12th and January 26th, 2015. No public comment? Okay, do we have any board comment?
I have a question, a follow-up question from last week, my comment last week on the pavement markings and keyings.
I did speak to the DPW director about those. That is an operational issue. He said he would certainly look at them. He has not called me back and said that he's going to do this or that. I would suggest that perhaps you follow up with him as it's outside of what I have jurisdiction over. I mean, if you'd like, I can follow up with him and see if he has an answer. But if I recall, he said that there were never any out there.
Really?
Or at least that he recalls. But if you'd like, I'll follow up with him.
No, I can, I can contact him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other board comment?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I wanted, so I wanted to check in on the housing production plan. Last, last two checked, that was...
Tune in tomorrow evening. The Board of Selectmen is going to be, they have it on their agenda to give final comment and wrap that up. I know that Sam has submitted to the state and I believe he has received comment. I want to get any comment from the Board of Selectmen, forward it back to him, and then it should be wrapped up and ready to go. The state was pleased with it. I guess, my understanding was there was a few minor tweaks. Nothing more clarification language than substantive change. And once I have all those comments, I will forward it around so that the board can review the final version.
Great, that's great news. So timeline-wise, that, so Board of Selectmen tomorrow. When, when do you think roughly speaking, so what's the process at this point? Where does Selectmen give approval?
Mm-hmm.
We review, I guess, do we have to vote on it or anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that it'll probably be on the next agenda for, for the board to say yea or nay.
Okay.
And then we would submit it to the state.
And then we would submit to the state.
Okay.
Great, and then when would it, what's the earliest it would go into, the benefits would go into effect?
We would need to start meeting the goals, so it'd be within a year. So we'd have to go for a year, meet the goals, submit the report that we met the goals, and then we would reap the benefits.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. Let's see, I might add a couple other quick ones here. Yeah, so just a couple other things. What's the status in, we had talked about, okay, for town meeting, you know, we might have tabled some of this stuff, but I just want to check this out. So the design, we talked about extending the design bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
This was a little bit before you joined, but we might have talked about it briefly. Extending the design bylaw to other districts?
Mm-hmm.
It's a little, to like, I think, what is, the other, commercial-like districts are like limited retail and what's the other one? Oh, help me out with...
Limited business?
Limited business.
Commercial, and then retail.
Retail, yeah, so there's a, how, how realistic, not realistic, do you think that is to do that for town meeting? If we, without changing, major changes to our design bylaw as it is?
If you just want to extend what you have, it's probably relatively easy.
Okay.
I guess the question is, do you want to just extend what you have and then have to come back in a year and tighten it up? Or do you want to live with it and then tighten it up and just move it on? Because, and I'll have to look at it, I think it would just be a matter of, you know, a copy paste and submit it as, you know, an addition to each section.
Right, we have to make sure it doesn't contradict each section, that one wouldn't override or supersede.
Yeah, well, but I mean, that's...
The verbiage in each one.
And well, and that, that's sort of, if you're just copying and pasting, using exactly what's there and putting it somewhere else, that's relatively easy, as long as it doesn't contradict. Or it's a total rewrite.
I thought we wanted to revamp it, as opposed to just copying the same one.
Well, yeah, our goal is definitely, ultimately to revamp it and have it, have all the districts referencing a common framework. So, yeah.
Maybe the right thing is to create the common, the common one and then one that doesn't have one. Do the detail on that one and then introduce them that way and then go back and finish the last one, which has the current design standards today and put it back into the new model that we create for the, for the other districts that are not governed by it.
Okay. Yeah, it's fine, I mean, the other thing is the village district, if it's passed, if it's, if it passes, will probably subsume a significant portion of, I think, the limited business district that's in town already, so, so I can live with that, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's probably less realistic with wrapping up the village. I know that the Historic Commission is taking on the first draft of the APD.
Okay.
I started working on it and I got a call from a member of the commission, "Oh, we're, we're gonna do that," and I said, "Okay." I said, "When you have a draft, let me see, I'll work through it with you." So that takes some of that off, but we also have the solar proposal, which would come up next.
Okay.
After the village, so again, if the board's going to move forward with looking at that, you know, you get into, that would have to take an additional back burner if you want to try and push design bylaw.
Yep.
Before, for May.
And my signs and parking, well, before the design bylaw?
Well, that was the other, yeah, that was my next thing, was the sign, sign bylaw.
The sign bylaw is, parking square footage, we do it.
Yeah, your parking is wacky.
Yeah, so we need to fix the policy.
Parking, I think...
And those have been mine for over a year.
I don't want to say parking is easy, because it's, it's never easy, because nobody ever really agrees. I would say signs are the hardest bylaw to pass, because nobody's ever happy. Businesses say you don't have enough, residents say you have too much. The colors are too this, you want electric lights. So I honestly think the design guidelines might be a, I hate to say this, quicker run-through, because everybody kind of has a concept of what they want. Signs, you get into a much hairier discussion, but the board can sort of think about that and decide how you want to go, and we can go from there.
Okay, well, again, I've been working on signs, I've, I've been requesting the signs and the parking for over a year, so that's something I really want to get done, completed, and moved on from.
Okay, so the four things, we just talked about the four sort of topics outside of village district. We talked about signs, parking, solar, extending the, the design bylaw. Yeah, I mean, the other one, I don't even, like, the other thing, you know, so the economic dev stuff is the next big, is another big horizon, like...
Which one, the development?
Economic development stuff, you know, the action plan coming out of that, reworking the master plan element, that's probably a bigger, probably, trying to even, let's not even go there till after we get the village thing completed.
I mean, I have serious concerns that that's, I think that's a more nebulous topic than the planning board alone. An action plan for economic development, I think, from my perspective and per sort of the Economic Development Chapter as it's written, should come from an Economic Development Committee that's representative of a variety of the town committees, because I think that while there is a planning aspect to economic development, there's also significant other aspects that affect it. And I, you know, I'm happy to work on it through this board, but I think that there's also a lot of other concerns that need to be represented.
Absolutely, yep.
And I think that any one board driving that makes, gives the perception, maybe, to other boards that they're only a secondary part of the process. So I think that creating some sort of an economic development entity
Yep.
as advisory would, would be the most...
Well, we've talked about that, because you need, you need sewer, for example, sewer.
Yeah, sewer.
Because you, you want to be able to have a conversation that for economic development on Chase, on Lemminster Shirley Road, we might want to look at searing them, because businesses, industrial can go to Devens, they can go to Lemminster, where those are provided for them. So we really do need to partner with the other committees to have those conversations.
So do we want to, so that, everything you guys are saying makes total sense. Do we maybe, you talked to Board of Selectmen, maybe more. What do we, do you think we need to do to, just work with the other boards to get that committee formed?
I think it needs to be created, and I think that then there needs to be a membership outlined. And I can work with the town manager to see what, what her feeling is on who would create it. I believe it's probably the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
And then, you know, how it gets populated and who the representatives are.
So, yeah, I mean, my personal feeling would be, you know, like, I think that'd be a great conversation to have with her. I mean, I don't, I'd be curious where the rest of the board stands. I personally would be in favor of recommending to the Board of Selectmen to form that, you know, shortly after the New Year, if, if they feel that we have the bandwidth between the other things going on with, you know, building reuse and what have you.
Right, well, and I, I agree, and I think there should be a member from planning, from, yeah, all the committees, sewer, reuse, there should be one person representing each board.
Agreed. What do you guys, what do you guys think?
I think, I agree.
Yeah, that sounds good.
What else you got?
Okay, so let's just recap here. In terms of stuff we might potentially dream about getting before town meeting, we talked about the four things, signs, parking, solar, saying design bylaw. What are we actually, we, we talked about kind of postponing the extending the design bylaw, and I think that makes sense. So now we're talking about three things, solar, signs, and parking. Where did we land?
And village.
Well, village is, village is, I assume we're all on the same...
Signs you're not going to get in front of town meeting this year.
Okay, so we got parking and the solar, reviewing the solar to discuss if we want to do something with that.
Yeah, I think that history says solar's not going to happen either. I mean, I, I think that if it took you two years to do your original solar bylaw and seeing the passion and the amount of people who came out, not only for the local
Yep.
project, but for the bylaw in general, I think that you can probably expect a significant discussion.
Yes.
Signs, as I said, I think is a heady topic. If we're to start this now, it's December 8th, we would need to have a complete bylaw that everybody's kind of signed off on by March 1st-ish.
Okay.
Maybe March 15th at the latest.
Yeah, so, so that leaves us with, so parking, so you think that one?
Potentially.
Okay, potentially parking. We got, so I hear what you're saying about solar, I think that makes sense. By the same token, I think, getting the conversation started, even if we don't take it to the...
Oh, yeah, and I think that, you know, we've said that this is something we'll start to talk about once the village is wrapped up. But I mean, that's, again, late January, early February, so actually nailing down something that everybody can buy into by March is, you know, at that point, you're, you're pushing up against it.
And so with signs, where, there's two things. One is we have to actually craft the bylaw, it sounds like there's some overhead there. So unless some volunteer steps forth, that's probably going to fall on your shoulders to do that.
I would imagine most of the bylaw stuff will fall on my shoulders.
So, okay, so there, there's that, and then there's the fact that you're saying it's pretty contentious, so the vetting process with the public will be significant with the sign bylaw?
My experience with sign bylaws is yes, there is a significant vetting process.
Okay, so like the solar thing, it's something we could start talking about as soon as we wrap, put the bow on, village district, and have that package ready for town meeting. Okay, so, so does that make sense from a schedule standpoint? Like, parking would really be then the next in the chute, and we, you know, as far as...
Yeah, I mean, I can start putting together parking stuff.
Okay.
I know it's the holidays, but I wouldn't underestimate the amount of work that's going to take to wrap and put a bow on the village district. I think there's still a lot of work that, that we have ahead of us there to get that all supported by the time we go to the vote.
Especially getting the public to understand what we're trying to do.
Exactly.
And I wouldn't want to detract from the importance of the village district by overloading the ballot with a bunch of other questions. Yeah, so, so just to clarify what I'm talking about here. I mean, so, so as far as edits that take Adam's time to take the input and discussion that we do and then fine-tune this, I think, I think what I hear him saying is the amount of effort it's taken him during his, you know, weekly work week is decreasing. Then we do have the public input, I mean, depending on, if we get a ton of public input that whatever leads us to make significant changes, then, yeah, his work will ramp back up, maybe making edits. But if it doesn't ramp way up, then he may have time to do some of the, you know, the bylaw work on some of these other things, whether it's parking or sign.
Yeah, you know, I think that with the, the village bylaw at this point, we're looking at, I think that the board has kind of landed on substantially agreeing upon uses, kind of the look that you're looking for in the village. And, you know, maybe there's some fine-tuning of the language that gets used in there, but how the implementation of the village will happen. I think that the last time we talked about it, everybody more or less agreed. And if I'm wrong, please feel free to correct me. So now it's the board fine-tuning it and then taking it to the public. And you're right, Damon, selling it is, is not going to be easy, but I don't have to sit in my office every day and sell it to people. I can start doing some of the background on other stuff. Wrapping up stuff for the board and, you know, doing that stump where you go out and talk to people and, you know, shake hands and kiss babies and trying to get people to buy the, the village bylaw is, you're right, there's still a lot of that to do. But that's going to continue into March and April, where some of this other stuff can happen sort of concurrently.
True.
And if everybody comes back with, you know, torch, torches and pitchforks and we have to rewrite the whole thing, then that's another story.
So, okay, so given that, like, what's the, I'm sorry to like beat this to death.
I know, so let's move.
So what's the, in terms of helping Adam figure out which paper to pick off the pile next? Well, it sounds like parking, parking would be the next really kind of work he could do after he's done with...
Well, and I think parking is kind of easy, it's just that the parking spaces in any development is on a square foot, I, I believe it's on a square foot rationale, and it just needs to be a three by six or a four by four, whatever that standard measurement. And we have it on this whole graphical square footage, which all the engineers are saying, "No, nobody uses that." You really just want to say they've got to be three foot wide, seven feet, whatever that magic number is.
180 square feet.
That's, that's what it is, there you go. So that's really...
But you don't, but do you want to look at parking for uses? You know, how you calculate parking numbers? Or are we just looking at the design of parking spaces?
For us, it was the, I'd have to reread it now.
I think she's talking just about the design of parking.
Well, you say parking and I, I think of it soup to nuts, you know.
Well, and when... Well, and, and when-
How many seats, how many parking spaces do you need for a restaurant? How many do you need for a, and I know you have that in there. I wasn't sure if you wanted to revamp that as well as the design portion.
She's just talking about maybe just broth.
Okay, so if we're just talking design portion, that's, again, a lot less controversial and a lot more-
Right. That was the main issue that was brought up to us through vehicle, you know, subdivisions and, and buildings and commercial with our engineers. If, through your experience as, you know, planning, if you, when you read it and, and you say, "Oh, geez, that's for the, the commercial, they're really, their numbers are raw," then please bring that to our attention, because-
They're really not. I mean, but it-
So then it's, for me, it's the square footage, one eighty.
And it's one of those things, parking is, there's a, there's a range.
Mm-hmm.
And some people say, "Oh, well, we don't ask for enough parking, or we ask for too much," or, if everybody's happy with it, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. If you really think that you want to delve into it and you've had problems with either historically not enough parking at, at uses, or, you know, gee, we have these people build these big Cs and nobody ever uses half of it, then we can start to address that.
Right. Like CBS, I think, has way too much parking, and then I think Asian Imperial doesn't have enough parking. So there's, there's that balance of what happened at CBS, that they've got a half a mountain of parking, and what happened at Asian, where they, they're parking on the shrubs that we said they needed to, for vegetation.
But that's not the part we're trying to get them to fix right now.
Yeah, well, but I, I wanted to know if that was what you needed.
If, if in the chapter, he, when he's reading the parking, if he sees that, "Well, geez, that issue was because we didn't cover this."
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Then he can recommend we look at that as well.
Yep. The big impetus for, I think the thing you, you, the thing you think will be quick and simple to change is like, we had several projects, including the school, which came by, and everybody who did any parking was asking for a waiver to the design, the, you know, design dimensions for the parking.
Per space, the way we had it, per space.
I can, that, that's-
And then I just gave the example, looking at those two businesses myself, we have a parking issue there.
Okay, so here's, now, I'm just going to propose, so parking would be number one on his plate, he might knock that off real fast.
Yeah.
The, the solar thing, I think we can wait till after we've done all the, my personal recommendation is wait till we've done all the public meetings on the village district, we're ready to go to town meeting. And I think that's more of a, before Adam can really even do a lot at his desk with that, I think, unless he thinks there's something he wants to do to sort of prep the conversation, I think it's more of a board and public, board discussion followed by public discussion, and then we can see what Adam's got to do at his desk. But-
I agree.
That's not really in the chute yet. So I would say after parking goes signs. And signs is probably a good segue, and then we get past town meeting and we can start talking about design bylaw and, you know, signs is probably a good segue into that.
Sounds good.
All right.
Excuse me.
Now, um, on that caveat, so you have all those-
Yes.
Another day. Okay.
What?
Well, I, I didn't know if there's a way to parking law on the agenda, those that we want to work on so they don't get, so we, we, you know, they're always in front of us and we're not forgetting about them, and then three months later, we bring it up again. So not that we have to every week say, "No report," no, but they're, they're always in a-
Maybe, maybe if we could just take like-
Well, that would prioritize them. They'll, I'll have them.
Okay.
Okay, in the action file or whatever.
And I'll just start sort of-
Okay.
Putting stuff together, yeah.
All right. What else?
No, that's great. And, yeah, I would say, yeah, even, you know, put the economic, something based on the feedback, put that, forming that committee in that list, and good, thanks. So sorry for taking so much time, but thank you.
Do you want us to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen about the economic development, or you just have a conversation with Carrie?
I'll talk to Carrie, and if she, if she wants to, if she thinks that you guys should make the recommendation, uh, when we meet in two weeks, I'll, yeah.
Okay.
I can bring a letter that I've written and have you guys read it and decide if you want to sign it.
Perfect. All right, anything else, Nathan?
No, thank you.
Any other board comment? I'll go back to public one more time, because that was such a long, yes.
Hi, my name is Greg Diner. I live at 129 Pleasant Street in Lunenburg. I just had a question regarding the signing bylaw. Is that just regarding the village district? No, it's the entire signing bylaw? And where is that venue? Do you guys hear those, or is it Board of Selectmen, or?
It comes to us, the sign bylaw, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Paula? Paula Bertram, I just want to let you know that economic development is one of the Board of Selectmen goals as well. So, and we did discuss the, the formation of an economic development committee and understand that this, this board is an integral part of that. So it's definitely on our radar as well. The one other thing that maybe is in overlap, or I think it's definitely in overlap, is stormwater management. So that is one of our goals as well, and the possible formation of a stormwater utility or, or some other type of entity to try to institute a fee to help with the maintenance and custody of storm water. And I know there are numerous boards around town that are interested in that. So those are the two goals. I think there's a lot of overlap between the Board of Selectmen and this board.
And I, I know you and I talked about it back in March.
Yeah.
And I did give to the board last week, two weeks ago, I apologize, Reading, the town of Reading has a bylaw, utility bylaw, and the town of Salem, was it Salem?
Salem, yeah.
Salem.
It was Salem that had, Reading's was very, you know, cut and dried, forty dollars per quarter for household, a single.
So that was, that was a flat fee? It wasn't based on impervious services?
Residential. And then for business, it was on-
Unequivocal presidential unit.
Exactly. And then for the businesses, it was on the surface.
Yeah, I know, I'm looking at a lot of other towns. Those are two that I haven't looked at, but-
Yeah, I was as well. And those were the two that I, I kind of liked.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And it's, it was very good, because there was a lot of verbiage to break down exactly. They used the why, what, what the money will do. So there could be a lot of copy and pasting and just Lunenburg versus-
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other? All right, with that, I would make a motion to adjourn, and we will be back December 22nd at 6:30 PM.
Second?
Aye.
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 Aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming.